... The importance to provide definitions of brewery, microbrewery, restaurant, restaurant fast food and so forth is going to be scheduled for next Thursday night. Just let the public know that if anybody was interested in listening to that tonight, we are, we are, we'll be shipping that to our commissioner's meeting next Thursday. With that said, I'd like to move on to citizen comments. Any residents who are not able to attend the meeting in person may comment during this time by dialing 571-748-4021. Again, the phone number to call is 571-748-4021. The code to enter is 300-322-312-PAL. Again, the code to enter is 300-322-312-PAL. To unmute your phone, please dial star six. After muting your phone, state your name and your address, then begin your comment. You'll be given two minutes to speak, and you can place back or mute after your comment. We'll give two minutes for citizen comments for anybody who would like to call in at this moment. Give one more minute, and then we'll, we'll move on. All right, let, let the record show that there were no citizens called. There were no citizen comments by phone in. At this time, I'll take citizen comments for everybody present in the meeting. Excuse me, sir. Yes. For the record, please state your name and address and your concerns.
My name is Ed Fallon, 511 Taylor Avenue, Trichester PA. Here with advice from Commissioner Nicole Whitaker, who was very grateful for calling me back and suggesting that I come here. We have a lot of concerns on Taylor Avenue with beaters going up and down the street, some rather quickly, some quite carelessly. In fact, the other night, Mr. Softy Truck was down our street, ice cream for children, and two young kids go flying up in their cars back to back. They had to be doing forty miles, fifty miles, I don't know, speed limits posted to fifteen. I bring in my concerns. I, I don't know if any of us ever called. I called, my wife called the police about a year ago, and they said there's nothing they could do. Called a few months after that. I talked to a very nice man who said he would try to do something. I don't remember his name. I'm just really concerned. I've been a forty-year resident here. First time in a long time that I've been to a meeting. Probably been twenty years if I remember where it was in Charleston. I would appreciate if someone could at least look into that. Nicole said she's going to try to look into this, this serious matter before somebody gets killed, just like what happened on Johnson Avenue forty years ago. Someone was speeding up the street, and their son got run over, and something was done about it. My suggestions, I could offer suggestions, be twofold. One, to make it one way, if you can't make it one way, then to put some kind of slowdown barrier that they call speed bumps somewhere. I would say one, if not two, come off a market, go with a huddle, perhaps put two speed bumps. There were even one, and then another one halfway from huddle to Chi. Just something to slow the people down. Also, there's, a lot of trucks have been cutting through there as well. I see some soda trucks coming down there to go to the sandwich shops and various other places. See a lot of box trucks coming back. They are independent contractors for Federal Express that use that as a cut through. Come tailor to Chi to make the quick lift to go back there as well. And so primarily, it's the red, it's the employees of, it's the employees of businesses that are back in the industrial park off of Blue Bowl Avenue that are causing most of this speeding. Sometimes it seems to happen certain times of the day in the morning, rush hour traffic, and then shift changes in the afternoon and various other things like that. I was hoping that more people had called and complained, but Nicole told me that no one really has. Other people, other people pitch, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
But I guess someone has got to do something about this and take some action to bring this issue to your desk to try to alleviate the situation. Nicole?
No, I was gonna say, I did speak with our township manager about it, and we have a couple ideas. I did share with him your comments. We do, I did recently hear from a resident that's having an issue with running stop signs on, at the intersection of Lawhead and Huddle as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yes.
Right, so, and then speeding, that road is wide and long, so it definitely is a straight, straight run through, right?
Except around the bend, it's really getting too difficult around there because a lot of people are parked with a cross coming through.
Right.
You can't even get two cars through there anymore. You have to stop at the car.
Stop to let the car come through.
Be on the other car. Come through with vice versa.
So George, we, I talked with George, and we talked about getting our, our, what is his name, George? I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, Alfred Rico, the traffic guy, he's utilizing, he's benefiting with putting down our whole neighborhood. What's the immediate or possible to do with one of them? People will go back to that point. Right, it's, it's difficult to think first, it was, it was, uh, I mean, pretty good at looking at this thing, you know, what you're, what's causing the problems and, and possible solutions. It does kind of have a little bit of a first thing. Go back and see if there are a lot of problems that we have in mind or change.
Very much, I speak pro in the neighbors in my neighborhood as well. Would it be any way also to perhaps limit access to that street by allowing signage that local residents own, and that be kind of that?
Yeah, I mean, so, so from the actual enforcement perspective, I'm happy to do it. I don't, we don't have to see much time, so you can plan better around more of this. Can enforce it, you know, so.
Right.
Where I think it would be better.
Ask more as a deterrent, but imagine.
But Al was really good at looking at these situations and having, some of the situations that just sort of wasn't just a wine game, some of the situations because it isn't become a lot of thought. We are willing to get that neighborhood as a, as area of change.
When would that be rehabilitation?
Right, right.
So, so, you know, I think it would be a natural progression now, we can say, okay, because from all that other perspective, now people move, you know, where, where people from their vehicles and walking and all.
I mean, if it's a public road and people are allowed access to it, if this is nothing I can say about it, I don't know if I'm a neighborhood or not. My issue here is just finding some way to slow these people down. Don't want anybody to kill. It's run, play in the street, people walk the dogs. I want to open my door one day to get my car, someone else put it off. I'll go, yo, and I get one of these, and it's like, okay, fine.
Right, right.
You can't say it, you know what I'm gonna do? Person in that get angry because you know.
And his car is parked on both sides of the street, so if a kid runs out, you can't even see.
No, it's.
At all, yeah.
Let's start off with, with getting a traffic study done with Mr. Al Federico. So if there needs to be a motion from the board, we can do that next week to do it. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm happy to move forward with it to, to leave some of the, to leave some of the pressure.
I don't know if I have to be here for that meeting next week. I would, we want to be the one.
You don't have to be here. We'll put it, we'll, you don't have to be here. If we, do we need a motion for that?
We, we have a budget set aside for engine unit costs that we utilize, and this falls in. So we've kind of just been using these as, as long as there's no strong objection, we start the process.
Okay.
I think we're good to go then.
Okay.
All right, great.
We also have the, the speed tracker signs too, the portable signs you could throw that.
The chief is putting those up. I talked to him today. So we're gonna put up the portable speed tracker signs this week, so they'll go up.
That's a deterrent.
That's the one that says, hey, this out, right, right.
That would certainly help, and I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Speak to all the residents down there. Appreciate your concern, and if there's anything you can do about it.
Yeah.
Very grateful, thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming out.
My family's a former resident of Taylor Avenue.
You were?
Many, many years ago. Kindergarten, to be exact. I was in kindergarten, so. I will be fifty-three this month. All right, thank you for coming, and we will get started.
Well, you can say. Right, if you want to. Yeah. Yeah. Yep, thanks for coming.
All right, I believe there will be numerous citizens comments tonight, so I'd like to thank, thank the resident that came out tonight and speaking regarding this concern with all traffic. With that said, we'll move on to our engineer's report. Mike Seoka, let's announce it correctly.
Yep, Seoka, you got it. Uh, thank you. Uh, I trust you have a copy of our report here. I'll go through quickly to the, the items on the agenda. Trichester Avenue Streetscape update. Premier Concrete started a couple weeks ago, April twenty-first, with that project. They're working between Johnson and Lawhead Avenue right now, replacing curb and sidewalk. They're maybe twenty to thirty percent completed on the curbing. They have some ADA ramps done, some of the electrical conduits done, but that, that's progressing. Next item is the 2021 Road Program update. We, I believe we have just finalized, received the final listing from the township for the streets, for the, for the 2021 Road Program, and we would be asking the board to authorize advertising for public vehicles. Uh, you will, okay. Uh, and then the Propco escrow release, Wawa release number four. That is just the escrow release for work completed to date. You'll have that. Will that be done next week also?
Yeah.
So all these items will be next? Okay.
We won't be further on anything from that one.
I got you, okay. So, yeah, that, that's just an update to that. They've been progressing over the Wawa site, and some of that site work has been done. About thirty-seven thousand dollar escrow lease they'll be requesting. The next item is Wells Fargo Land Development Resolution. That's a conditional final approval for land development. The next one is Willowbrook Clubhouse Punch List. We did perform a final punch list inspection per their request. We issued that letter, and we will be requesting that the board just send the verification letter for that punch list in accordance with Section 510 of the MPC. But we did already send that out certified mail. The developer should, should have that. Uh, other items, Kate's Glen will be recommending payment of invoice number three. It's final, for the final basin conversion work is all done. It's about twelve thousand dollars for that. Looking for that next week. Two other items, just to consider, Dunkin' Donuts and Eight Twenty Columbia will be looking for two grants of extension for those land developments. And we have letters requesting those items, so it's just a matter of granting those two extensions. Uh, and just also to note, we were notified, just, just, just today, actually, there's gonna be a detour on Falk Road in relation to, to the Three Twenty Two project. So, you know, they're gonna, that's gonna be occurring soon. We, we got notice, I think the township got notice, but it's gonna be for about one month, beginning Monday, May tenth.
So, they moved it.
Oh, did that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, did, oh, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Pushed it back one week.
That's the CSX board's report.
Now, that's, uh, this is, this is in relation to work in Bethel Township. The reason we got notification is the, the proposed route, detour route, is Garnet Mine to Larkin, Larkin to Chi Avenue. But in looking in flow of traffic there, I don't think it would be as impactful as we're lead because the public road.
As, have we got any notification for the Three Twenty Two? I mean, Meeting House Road, CSX Road of Trucks, possibly another repair there?
We did not receive any notification, so we sent a message to CSX, again, asking for a copy of the detour as proposed by Pendot that they're required to send us. We also indicated that we are not too happy that they did that.
Right.
As well as, I did have an ask into them. Cordial's Market is, is concerned because every year they do roadwork right around their opening time of year. They do, they shut down the road, and it negatively impacts their business. So I've asked Rodney to try to work with them for some way to indicate, Rodney's a representative from CSX, to indicate that they are still open, because it's a shame to have the small business be impacted like this.
Meeting House, the Meeting House, that they did it.
That's, the, the issue is, are they gonna do the same thing down here that they did at that one?
And I guess the only other thing on the engineer's report, I'll just touch base on, is Autozone. That work is underway. We did notice they had some issues with ENS controls and trash. We asked them to clean up the site and noted, sent the notice. Also, just to know, there'll be a meeting with Pendot next week on Wednesday morning for full spotting for pedestrian signage. If everyone's pedestrian, I'm afraid, if that, if that falls in there.
I, I feel heard in front of, sorry, I do want to. And I think that's, I think that's about it, unless the board has any questions. Any questions for our engineer tonight?
I got a couple. The Willowbrook Clubhouse.
Yes.
This is just a list that they had to take care of before they get a CO or anything?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, this is the, that was the final inspection. You could technically grant a temporary CO conditioned on some of those items, but, you know, we, you know, it really needs to be some of those items that we cleaned up before you should really.
Right. Well, well, my concern is still, and I don't know how we go about this, I just need to have it on record. I've still had the concern of the safety concern, and you have it on one of your lists here already with the, the basin not operating properly. The pictures here that you show us are exactly what I seen the other day also. I just want to put a comment out there that I don't know how we do not have a fence around that basin next to the building, because right now it's full of water. There's exactly what the pictures show, a shopping cart in there. It's not working. I thought that was one of the reasons they were made to put the rain in, instead of tying into ours on Mill Road, which seems not to be working. So my main concern still is a safety issue with that fence. I just wanted to put it on record, because I still don't see anything going up, that three o'clock in the morning, somebody comes out of that building, and that basin's not working, they're falling right into it, and I'm concerned about it. I don't even know how we didn't even see that on both ends. I just, there should be one there. Somehow, somewhere, there should be a fence close to, I, I can't believe it was built that close to that building in the first place, by the way. I don't know what to, why they weren't allowed to tie into our system, or help tie into that system down on Mill Road, but nobody should say anything about the rain guards that we tried to put in my ward, because it's not working over there either. So whether it's a rain garden or a retention pond, it's, that's a disaster over there at Willowbrook right now, and it is full of water right now. I hope nobody falls into it, so I don't think any CO should be given until that, that it's addressed, whether it's temporary or not. I mean, that was part of the project. We made them put a separate unit in instead of tying into ours, and it's a disaster. Bad. And then there are any other question, and I know you probably don't have this answer, I just need to put it out there, is, we got different answers from people during the week. Is, why did we go to I ninety-five, the Streetscape project, and not go back to the state and say, hey, we now took up sidewalk and curb up to I ninety-five to a fireworks place that's gonna be building a new building, put a curb back in with no curb cuts, which forces them to go to a one-way street on Johnson Avenue to get in? Or when they start building, they're gonna be tearing up what we're putting in out of Grant Martin, which, whether it was time or just paperwork, we should have did it. We could have either went down Johnson Avenue further, or took it down Lawhead more. I just don't understand.
I noticed that driving home today.
And we know this, we know this. We've been fighting with, I won't say fighting, we've been working, trying to get the fireworks doors to be built. The delay was the HOP from Pendot. The delay was a piece of ground, because there's a roundabout that we found out is going there afterwards, a little piece of slither. But why on earth would we, I just don't understand it. And I just had to vent it out? I don't, it should have never been done? When you have them building the building, that was their responsibility on the Streetscape, on their plan? How hard is it to do paperwork, or call the state and say, hey, we'd like to move it down Lawhead or Johnson, and this is the reason? I don't, I don't want to hear that we had the HOP, they had it too. They had it first to get, that was the issue with them trying to build was, when's the HOP coming from the state for the fireworks store? I just wanted to put it out there. I don't think, I think it was a waste of money. It saved, hopefully, it's, I'm not saying hopefully, the developer saved money, because now he doesn't have to do it, unless I, I don't see how it's not gonna get destroyed, building the big building they want to build up there. I just, we just, I, I don't know why we don't think things out and try to go back to the drawing board and say, hey, we started the project, who cares if it takes an extra month to get the paperwork done? Just get it done.
Something a part of that was, though, is the roundabout that's coming in, right? So if the roundabout is there, that, people aren't gonna be able to enter into that building from Trichester, from that, from that frontage, right? So they may have to go on Johnson Avenue. That's a one-way. That end may have to be a two-way right there, so that people can go in and out of that business, but not enter right across from the I ninety-five on and off ramp right there, where we have the new curbing, right? So that's an alternative. But I don't know when, when those things were approved. I saw the same emails back and forth regarding the curbing and all, and, you know, in that area.
So now you're gonna have, you're gonna have delivery trucks coming on a residential road?
There's nobody there. At the end of Johnson Avenue, there's Alexander, the alley here, the alley here, the two houses there, that first house is seven hundred something, that's up further, that area right there is all over.
I get it, but that's our road, and our trucks gonna tear it up.
Right, so, so, you gotta keep in mind a couple things. The Jake's Fireworks Project received approval in July of 2020, and since then, they, they've yet to comply with any of the items that's on the resolution. So even the resolution item referencing the HOP permit stated that they would provide a plan to the township prior to submitting to Pendot for coordination. The plan never came in. Our HOP permit was issued. They got their HOP permit on April twenty-first of this year. They submitted to us the HOP permit, but again, without the plan. So we, we have yet to receive from them what the plan is that they submitted to, to Pendot. So we can't see what Pendot, we have not been able to see yet what Pendot has told them to do. There was three items on the actual permit. One says alter low-volume driveway, so I don't, I don't know what that means. That could be that, that could be widened, replace, we don't know, because we don't have plans. So what we did was, we talked to, we sent email to the engineer that they really need to coordinate now with Pendot, was Pendot's HOP permit issued us a permit where the first revision that we sent in had, had the depressed curves indicated on it. And their comment came back to us was that driveway was needed to install on the approach to the bridge. I think what's happening in Pendot's, I know I can't speak for them, but I think what's happening from previous experiences, they're seeing that there's no recorded plan for that property, for a development plan, and they're, so in their eyes, it's a vacant property.
So if we had all these questions that we have right now, which are good ones, which is, they got an HOP, but we didn't see the plan. Nicole's right, you, you take a portion of Johnson Avenue to a stop, and from that on, it's still one-way coming out, it's two-way going in. They, you're saying that the driveway was supposed to be somewhat smaller, or whatever, that's what it sounds like, or, we don't know. So if we had all these questions, why won't we say, hey, can we jump to the other side of the bridge and continue? Let's not do this. We waited this long. I'm just saying, we, I feel that we wasted the money where it could have went down Lawhead Avenue, the improvements on Johnson Avenue or whatever, that area, by the alley, and, and waited for Jake's. We waited this long for Jake's and finally got something on paper. Do we all like it? Hey, shame on us, it, it's, it's there. We got it. We got what we felt when we passed this plan, that this board felt was the best for everybody, considering how long it was going on for. I just, I think, if you, if we had that many questions, we should have never allowed that down.
So I'm saying.
Never.
So I don't think we had any questions.
Right.
Why you just did, you just had question. The question's of, nope, we didn't, they had it.
But those just came up. They just came up in the last couple of weeks or so.
So we did this project, the, the issue would be, is, I don't necessarily disagree.
But George, I remember us talking, why, you know, we need to stop at Johnson Avenue, not go up to the bridge. That was, that was stated, to say, stop at Johnson Avenue, because we knew what was going on to the bridge, to wrap it up and everything else. We didn't need it, just try to order it, go onto the other. We did, I remember saying, yo, we are stopping at Johnson Avenue. That didn't mean, don't go, don't get me wrong, Johnson Avenue is right there and politically correct, you got that little section right by Johnson Avenue to the bridge.
We just still don't have anything from the developer to indicate that that actually, like they haven't recorded the plan, so we, like, there's no indication.
Right, so the thought was stop at Johnson Avenue, because we would thought we would have plans, they would, they would have come in by now, and we would have had a visual of what they were doing, and let them develop that frontage area, and then we continue on with the project. That was the thought, but they hadn't come in, so are we gonna leave that area looking destitute for another year or two, until they figure out what they're gonna do? They still own that property. They're not under any, you know, timeline to say, you have to do this next. So we leave that part looking like that. It's already terrible looking as it is, right? So we leave that area bad, and then go on the other side and finish developing that? So we leave that area bad, and then go on the other side and finish developing that? We have to move forward with what our plan, with our project.
Did we reach out to them? I'm just saying.
I don't think it's our job to reach out to them.
So these approvals were like month, like we initially did this contract, we worked with Lays, so like, this was the only reason that it actually wound up right now with their 421 HOP permit and us those construction guys. Because all of the documents signed with community development, block grant, building housing, like all those things, everything would have changed. So like, you would, because remember, we're receiving federal money for this project, and we also have a section of the front that's being taken.
George, how, let me ask you a question. How hard is, I'm just saying, we all know COVID took a plan with everything. Everything is so backed up. How hard is it to go to say, hey, just saying, if we reach out to Jakes and say, hey, are you, or are you not? Then you just, you have a better reason to say do it instead of waiting, but whatever they mess up, they have to replace them.
So it doesn't work like that, though. It works on an approval from the state, so you have state, you're out, you're out.
I understand that, but you do not think, you do not think the state would understand that we got a piece of property that's being developed, that came to us, that we approved something or a way that we're thinking logically to save the money that we could continue down Chi Avenue or Lawhead or Johnson?
I always assume.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to say no more. I beg the difference. I beg the difference.
We should have done. I think when this whole process was through, when we were going through the approved process with Jakes, we had indicated to them on numerous occasions that there's no, that we have streetscape program, there's potential for random asking that might be installed, and we requested for Jakes, which I've been on, according to that work with them.
They had to do it if they, if they received an HOP.
They did it after the fact.
They did it, not after the fact, we got ours, they had theirs before ours, so how was it after the fact? I'm not making sense.
They didn't get, they didn't get theirs before ours.
Yes, they did.
They did not.
They did.
Well, I think.
We just didn't see the plan.
I think, I think we discussed all this long enough, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I believe there's no more comments for our engineer, so we'll move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you. Chairman, you have a copy of my written report on the file. There are several issues, several issues that we wanted to discuss. We'll be public hearing next week regarding the zoning ordinance, tax limits relating to the implementation of definite. National litigation. Us and I do report the commission as well as the board, and my reports are there. Only area that I do want to report that was stressful is I heard on behalf of township of property maintenance issues that were to report a common pleas. I'm pleased to report that the property of the appeal was dismissed. Going in, cleaning. We are in the process of working. Meeting scheduled on. Odenforce mall. To address each and every issue. Want to bring a party in from the township. Governor. All parties sign off on this with a knowing as to what. Matter is currently scheduled. With Judge Durham on a protract hearing for the eighth. Finished for the. Level and. How is it great job. Your face. Yeah. I don't believe there were any other action items. Our solicitor.
Um, citing him daily now, or what is the status of his citations?
That matter was on appeal. There were 15 separate site patients. Judge Amoroso, that knows are continuing violations, and she particularly don't have to say, they are aware of those, and I indicated, I think that was part of Mr. LeBlanc's ending that perhaps it likely did better part of judgment to address the issues rather than face a fine, rigid, taking most of these issues back to.
Right.
So I think there's. Minds. It was Crowley prepared to face very well. We had witnesses there, we had photographs, and we were prepared to proceed. Again, keeping with the concept of township, that we are more interested in clients than anything else. I'm hopeful that this long-winded venture that actually created by many years may finally pump to the head.
Now, what do you anticipate being the timeline for cleaning up?
I don't know, because I, my understanding is there has been additional trash placed on the property. I don't even know what the extent word does Mr. Crowley, because we have been prevented from going actually on the property. Didn't indicate to his attorney that we were either going to have a meeting on the property to address those specific issues, or we were going to go get another administrative search warrant on the property and photograph the document, whatever. At this time, I can't tell you exactly what, what that timeline will be doing, but I can tell you there will be a definite timeline.
Okay, I just, I just, as you stated, it has been going on since I've been on the board, and this is 12 years, right? So it's been a long.
We managed to get Mr. Gallagher's file.
Okay, good.
And I had it all way down. That was part of our discussion. Now, heard the fourth attorney.
Okay.
Said, well, I don't know what I'm for, but I'm just telling you, this is what I have now.
And the other concern is, is a aspect of some sort of mental issue, like hoarding, because it's very, it's a hoarding issue. He hides, he has things that are hidden in the woods. He has a plane, he has a trailer, I mean, he has.
We are aware of those.
Right, so it's, it's very disturbing, and I just don't want it to be another year, well, not even that, six months, I think is too long. It needs to be rapid for him to comply. Thank you.
Just real quickly, and just to let the board know, we will, we will be meeting shortly about both Malongos and the two properties up on Larkin Road. I think George sent an email this afternoon asking for dates. Once again, it's about compliance issues. Thank you.
There's no other comments for our solicitor, and we'll move on to our manager's report. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Alder reports on file of the township, the financial. Mount Pleasant escrow release, we'll have an escrow release resolution next month. This week is, remember, we released a large sum of money to them last month. This is kind of a cleanup of another escrow account they had with us, $100, we've been out. 777 Cherry Tree Escrow Release, I don't know if you remember, there was a zoning case a while back for a, I believe it was a tree area for compartments. We received a letter stating that the owner of the property has passed, and they are not looking forward to the project. Coming back from that. We have some boxes out in the shed that need to be destroyed from our record compliance with our Record Detention Act, we'll have the resolution. This past week, the county, some individuals from the county, Dr. Campbell and Dr. Monica Taylor and Reese Gorin Flo, attended our Board of Health meeting to give the Board of Health here an update on the.
Health Department.
Progress from the county health department. I have been following this through the consortium of governments. So with the county forming the health department, they have taken the position that, that they believe that the state department of health requires them to take on and be the active department of health for all municipalities who do not have a active department. And the caveat that they're using is that there's a communicable, the facility that the department of state, the state health department has in Chester handles communicable help for the community. That's their point. This will be something we'll need, we'll need to determine if we're going to oppose in any way or if we're going to go along with. They gave us a list of items that would be falling under their purview. However, they do not have a kind of set path forward of how we're taking over them. One of them would be restaurant inspections, something we currently do. Some of the other stuff falls right in line with what we do with vector control and property maintenance. So we're going to really have to think about this because it could change the entire operation of our township when it comes to. So we're going to, we're going to continue to monitor this, and we're going to, I mean, we're going to need to make terms, we'll have to bring Pierce involved in this to get some information on some of these things. Think that, you know, they're kind of green there in what they're doing, so a lot of what they're, you know, proposing, yes, it does fall under the health code, but it also falls under different codes, and we know that for a fact because we have multiple codes, they have multiple things. So I think we just need to look at this, they're going to have listening sessions, continued listening sessions and talk back and forth. And they have asked that eventually they could just have a one-on-one conversation. We'll be inviting people to continue with that, but we need to, we need to continue to monitor this. You have a draft of the township newsletter in your folders, I asked that you review them. We'd like to try to get that out next week if possible, so if you have a chance to look for this week of the break. PennDOT maintenance agreement, this is for the public roads that Upper Chi Chester Township would be required to take dedication of after the USA, US 322 project. We've been doing these maintenance agreements for these projects now, but obviously keep in mind that most of these roads actually. Years in the future. We just need to tighten them up. They're pretty standard. We did get a request from the township engineer to send over to PennDOT along with this, that they give us all the needs and bounds for all the roadways, so that everything is in place before we have to actually go. Finance director. So we advertised for the finance director position during audit season, which may not have been a wise thing to do. We did not get. We did not get any applicants that currently serve as finance. Just the finance. So I would like to put this out again. We do not get a robust amount of candidates, I would like. Us. That we're going to get there. Order project, been reaching out to the consultants, trying to coordinate them coming in to talk to us. We do have a meeting with one tomorrow to kind of go over it, and hopefully I'll be able to at least present some information. So we can meet with these people. We met with the school district to discuss the SRO contract. We have a school resource officer in the high school and in the middle school, and the current contract that we have with the school district begins this summer, so we'll need to get that tied up. We presented some figures to them that looked in line with what they were expecting and what we were expecting.
How long is that, George?
The current contract?
The term, yeah.
The current contract was a three-year contract, so we presented two options with them. We presented the five-year option. Can't really think the five-year option is the best for us. From a perspective of number of age of some of the officers and users of service, so we'll see what we think. Other items, we have been preparing for auditions. We had some meetings last year where we presented a proposal to do auditions to pre-fund some of our long-term liabilities from our pension and our pension tax. December, the board passed the trust ordinance to set up a trust to be able to handle. We have been monitoring the situation, we need to get EIN from the US. We've done that. We have our actual studies happening right now, we should see that for the students, so we'll know the exact dollar amount. We have the financial advisor going out with. Next step would be to appoint a bond counsel. So I believe the township solicitor will have someone by next week to present. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just one thing I'd like to add to your report, George, is when we met to discuss the SRO contract, we also did discuss the old school.
That contract, the lease term we currently have is good until 2022, so unless, I think this will be something we'll be dealing with over the next six to eight months.
Any questions for our township manager, other than the one that I just raised?
I have a question regarding the health department discussion that you had. So there was an email, I saw your, saw your email, George, today regarding our upper Chi seniors resuming their meetings at the community center on 452. So there was some discussion regarding the executive board of the upper Chi seniors requiring that all members be vaccinated. And my response was that we should follow, obviously, the guidelines set forth by the CDC and the county, Chester County. We don't require anyone coming into this building utilizing the gym or the meeting space to be vaccinated. They are using the township facility, therefore, they should be allowed to come if they resume meetings, not required to show their, or prove, how are they going to, they're going to require them to bring their vaccination card? And, and there was also discussion that they, the point is they want to be inside with no mask on, right? They want to be inside with no mask on. That's not going to happen. So the, the. So the, the restrictions are gonna be lifted as of May thirty-first. The mask restriction is not lifted. If you're in ti- inside, you still have to wear your mask. So the thought was make sure everybody's vaccinated so we can be inside, eat our lunch, talk, and not have to wear a mask. So one of two things has to happen. They have to, they can't require people to wear a mask. Excuse me, they can't require people to show their vaccination or be vaccinated to attend, and they have to wear their mask inside. Right? So.
Unless eating or drinking.
So.
Unless eating or drinking or medical fight. But again, it still goes back to, you know, you taking your temperatures and the, the normal things that we do, the hand sanitizers, taking temperatures upon entrance, those are the standard things that should be done, but requiring people to be vaccinated to attend is not. You can't do that.
So, so our communication with the senior club has been and will continue to be that the rules for utilizing that facility are what the, the CDC and Chester County Health specifically has given to us, which is you're still wearing ma- masking is still required. Six feet distancing, all those things are still required. We're gonna continue with that. My understanding is that the, that there is communication among their members or wanted to, to make sure that those vaccinated people are. Board of Health meeting, the, the individual asked or county, they stated that obviously they were. It comes down to, you know, by, I mean, I'm, it's, from everything I'm reading, it comes down to the organization from, from our perspective of our buildings, if they are in there without masks. So the requirement is that currently they would have to, they would have to follow our guidelines. That's where they would have to follow our guidelines.
So you're saying that the county did not answer their question?
The county was unable to.
Okay, so the communication is going back to the executive board is that the county agreed with what he said, the county agreed and, and with what the, his question?
It was an attendance at the meeting as well.
Yeah, I don't believe that they indicated that anything other than they should follow the regular guidelines. Um, they weren't gonna answer the specific question that he asked. Um, because there were a lot of caveats to it in terms of, well, I have members that are ninety-seven and active and have medical, you know, I mean, it was this long. One of those questions you can never answer correctly.
Right.
I agree with Commissioner Whitaker. I mean, we cannot force vaccination. So that's, that's, that's one thing. And number two, I don't believe that we should be having vaccine passports. I believe it hit the law still, privacy between you and your doctor, so.
Do we have a, do we have a sign down there that says must wear masks anywhere in the building?
Uh, no, but we rent, when we, when everybody rents it out, there's an expectation. I think the question comes down to is that what is the township's relation to the senior club? Because um, we ran out our facility here and we have people sign here, all the paperwork and everything. And if they go above and beyond their requirements, really, we don't have anything to be able to say. We don't regulate how they bring people into the organization or anything. The question is, we do fund a portion of the senior club. Does that give us any ability to further? Right, I think what we need to do is continue to express to them whatever the regulations of utilizing our facility. Indicated to another breach out to us.
So you're saying that we can't force that, we can't tell them that they cannot require people to have, be vaccinated in order to come to that building? We're letting them use a.
I am saying that we would not recommend this issue. To enforce that, that is a private matter or independent work. That's what their rules are. Not coming from us. Our rules are CDC guidelines. I think that they would candidly, get off the top of my head, would be hard pressed to enforce such an issue about vaccination. Participating in that. That would not be required. I mean, you can go to Philly's game and they don't require you to be vaccinated. Sixers game, they don't require you to be vaccinated, and they are all indoor. Utilities that are regulated on the local, county and state. But the answer is, I don't know how they could enforce vaccination or vaccination requirements from.
Right. So that's the language.
I think we're getting to, into the realm of individuals' personal beliefs and trying to enforce them on others versus to what.
Would it be a good idea to post the building? That we, we meet all CDC requirements and masks must be worn? I mean, we have.
I'm sorry, would it be a good idea to?
To post, yeah, we, why aren't we, you go to a restaurant at the store, it's all posted.
Well, I think.
But we haven't posted any of our buildings. That's. Right, but what I'm saying is that even though they're, that they rented from us, that doesn't mean individuals coming to that event won't see something posted on their front door saying, we need all CDC requirements, you must be masked underneath the building.
I would not want to be in a position to post under the door saying that.
Well, not, something where a mask or required down in the building, because ninety, ninety-five percent, I understand that. I'm just trying to have nothing posted.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea. Um, yeah.
I think your signs out here are the same as supposed to.
But I, I, I never even looked for them because I wear my mask, but at the same time, I don't know about the four fifty-two building. It's all I'm doing. It's time to protect this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it would be anything to bind the public down there.
Right.
It's not as, it's not used, it's like a reserve, so like the whole conversation. I think it's not good.
Right.
But we'll move on. There's other questions, we'll move on to your commissioners report. We'll start with the Vice Chairman, Commissioner Jervaca.
Thank you. Um, I want to discuss some um personnel, not person, some uh hirings and possible hirings and retirees going on in the highway department because we're gonna have to make some moves. Um, start out with Gary Beam is gonna be retiring. We had just lost another fellow a couple of weeks ago, moved on to something different. Um, so there are two positions we're gonna have to replace. Uh, the five part-time guys we need for the summer. I mean, we posted that and we've got one application so far on that. Um, I, I've talked with Putt and George and um, we have a recommendation for one of the full-time positions already. I don't, I don't know how everybody feels about it, but it's somebody who's already worked three straight summers with us. We know what we're getting. He can hit the ground running. And there's still another position we're gonna have to fill with Gary going now. And um, I, I, I'd like to ma- move on to one as soon as possible because we're short. We just had somebody else go out with an injury, had surgery today, so we're down even more. I mean, uh, next Thursday, I'm gonna recommend a certain person. I mean, George, I don't know, can I say his name? I, I but this, this individual's already worked three summers. He has a CDL. He would hit the ground running, uh, you know. Putt recommends him, I'm gonna recommend him, and there's still another position to fill full-time also.
Question is really is if the board uh is interested in accepting you, that is, to ask that information, or if the board would like us to advertise the job.
Two jobs now.
So we're considering to elevate a part-time career, basically?
Basically, yeah.
He's not, yeah.
He comes every summer when we do that.
Summer, seasonal help.
Okay, seasonal help.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Do we have his information in our packet?
You have an email that I can issue to you.
Okay.
You have a week to look at. We're still gonna have another position to fill too.
So if you, if you have two positions to fill, it's probably best to go ahead and advertise anyway.
Right.
You can still promote the one person that we have here, if you choose to, and then hire, you have applicants.
My, my thoughts are that's.
The only thing with the second position is speaking with Putt. Um, he's really interested in trying to get someone uh who is still able, who has building maintenance uh background. We have a lot of the work that's happening out there is maintaining our buildings, the buildings are being altered. There's a lot more maintenance work on a daily basis. So he's interested in trying to find some of the nice of those commercial certifications. Um, I think that that's gonna be a much longer process. Also, we don't really have a job description of the person yet.
Okay.
So I think we're, we're, in speaking with them, the idea will be trying to get that together for the.
We're covering that basically now, if we get the part-time help. I mean, we, but.
Get us information, we'll, we'll.
But it's, we have it. Um, all right, um, next thing with the highway, just uh letting yous know. Um, right now, we do our PA one calls ourselves. Um, well, me and Putt were discussing it. We're, we're kind of putting ourselves in somewhat of a liability. We, we have no equipment to actually locate our lines. We're don't wanna buy, okay, I know there's a sewer line there, or I know there's, that street light's electric line. I, I mean, uh, we're gonna talk to a company that uh does it, who's insured, has the equipment that. Yes, yes. Uh, I, I wanna get a, a, a price and see if it's maybe feasible for us to um to sub that out just for, you know, we've been lucky so far, but it's, it's, we're, we're putting a responsibility on our, our guys.
We don't call it ourselves? And they mark it for you?
Well, for certain things like, um.
We mark, we mark stormwaters?
Stormwater, streetlights, I mean, tra- uh, yeah, streetlights and certain traffic signals that are still underground. I mean, you hit a storm sewer, you, you know, we can repair it, but if, if somebody hits an electric line.
No, I, I understand. I agree with that, but what I'm saying is we don't call before we even start digging on them areas if we don't.
Yes, we, we, when people call, we go out and mark them for other people.
But this is the utility.
But, right.
So we call all the line every time of the day, but when someone else calls the day, we're very diligent, we have to go out.
We have to tell them where our sewer lines and our, our, our electric lines to our lights and stuff are.
We wanted that on the township utilities, not publicly.
Yes. Okay. Wha- right now, we're, we're doing the township utilities. We're doing them ourselves with. Well, I'll get the numbers and get back to you. I'm just telling you, I'm looking into it. Um, that and the generator we purchased. Um, that, we got some prices to, to, to get it hooked up and get it operable, and um, we're gonna move forward on that. It's doing us no good just sitting in the garage not connected. So we, we, we got some bids and some numbers. We can do it through Co-Stars and uh I'll get a final number and present that and we'll go from there, but uh, we wanna move forward.
Any questions for, for Vice Chairman? We're not taking any public comment at this point in time, but thank you.
And that, that, with HIPAA, I can't, I can't tell you that anyways.
All right, um, any questions for, for Vice Chairman?
I just didn't touch on the sewer meeting.
Oh, go, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Uh, we're, we're still trying to get that meeting for the project that, to go through Lower Chi. I think we might have a possible date, George?
Uh, it's, all right, listen, no, uh, we, we kind of had a possible date and then now uh it's gonna be switched, so we're waiting to know your back from uh Lower Chaychester.
Well, I could tell you this, the sewer authorities is taking this stance and I almost agree with them. I kind of do agree with them that if we don't have a date by a certain point, they're just gonna move forward with the project. I mean, we've been trying to get a date for how long?
Well, right now, they started the permitting process.
Yeah.
I mean, the work has not started.
Right.
To start the paperwork, um, we, you know, they're still trying to meet with Lower Chi. And what I had indicated to a couple of sewer board members is that if and when the meeting takes place, that this project is between Lower Chi, Chester, and the Sewer Board Authority, and, you know, any types of talks and negotiation will be, be, be between them. Uh, we'd be happy to attend if one or two commissioners can attend this and we can report back. Uh, I know it's hard for us to line a night for all five of us commissioners to meet, plus we would have to publicate, publicly advertise it, so I think I can still be advocating upon, upon me and Joe still meeting with them and to report back what we, what, what we find out. I think that'd be the best process to, to go forward with. All right, uh, there's no other questions for, uh, Joe, uh, Commissioner Joe Baca. We'll move on to Commissioner Cole Whitaker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. The historical society is having the taste of Chi raffle. Um, one person will win six hundred dollars worth of gift cards. It, the drawing is going to be this Sunday, May ninth. Tickets are fifteen dollars each or two for twenty. All proceeds will support the Chi Chester Rotary Club. You can stop by the library located in World Book Shopping Center if you want to purchase tickets. The um, speaking of the library, last meeting, I discussed the, the township's relationship with the library and um, to consider having the library become one of the boards appointed by um, um, the commissioners in their ward. So I would like to continue that discussion or at least have another discussion uh about um, the pros and cons of that. Recreation Department is still accepting applications for summer camp. They started their teen nights on, I think the first night was April thirtieth. That was successful. I believe they had around fifty teens here. Um, so they're gonna continue with that. At this point, it's still only too open to um, the school district, the school district students. We did send out our, our master RFP, waiting for that. And um, our reports specifically, um, have specific reports. Everything's on file. Our reports on these uh next week. I also provide an update from the Pennsylvania State Association of their last meeting and let you know about upcoming events. I will say that the, this year's conference is in October in Pittsburgh and that, that will be in person. I believe they're gonna have, they're trying to have a hybrid type of um convention.
Any, any other questions for, are there any questions for Commissioner Whitaker? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Edward Kastner.
Thank you. Um, not too much to report of your oral file. Uh, there's some, should be three of them in there tonight, put in the package. The fire marshal reporting for the month of April. Uh, the Brooklyn Town Center did meet uh back in April, the task force. Uh, they've had their surveys out to the, uh, some of the groups. Uh, more surveys will be going out for the uh task force. We meet again the task force on the twenty-fourth of May and uh we're trying to select a date for June the seventeenth for, which is a community outreach open meeting. Commissioners are more than welcome, uh, community. Tentatively, right now, Brooklyn Firehouse outside. Uh, this is where we have our first meeting with the public. Some of the reviews of the surveys and we'll meet on the twenty-fourth, the task force, exactly how we're gonna have this all set up for June seventeen. That's our game plan for that. Um, to give an idea, it's very busy. Uh, I'd like to set up a meeting with uh Mary, EMS, uh, to make sure everything's okay, schedule wise with the budget and everything. Four budget time, sooner than better, or as soon as we can, so I could get a date in the morning with Mr. Mary. That'd be great with uh Mike and Carl. They did over a hundred and ah fifty calls, I think, or something like that, um, a hundred fifty-three? They did over 115 calls, I think, or something like that, 153. Just in April, a third of them were outside of this township. So unfortunately, with the agreement with the EMS council and it's the next due medic unit. So they're very busy, not just in Upper Chi, they're very busy outside of the town. Report, some, some of them, they don't get to the call, but majority of them, they do to assist in other towns. And when I mean other towns, you're talking Aston, Conquerville, Lower Chi, Marcus Holcentrainer and everything. So very busy. We just want to make sure we're at the right position with them. It's getting tougher to hire anybody, as you see. Been working with part-time people, they like to try to figure out a budget to start possibility of some full-time people. This program's been nothing but part-timers. See, there's signs everywhere throughout, everywhere you look, nobody's doing any positions. Some position we cannot afford to not fill. Going to be some of their future endeavors if possible. Township. The other thing I do not have in here, George, I wasn't sure, who all? I'm asking the board for next week to, for the list of bills to be approved for the fire department. I'm not sure if all of them got it all. I know the 990s are in for one of them. Bruce Wayne would like to have their full, the 990s being done, they were audited, that one's done, the 990s being done now. Because they have a truck payment, I'd like to try to get that put in for next week for them, if possible.
Yeah, so Bruce Wayne had a full-blown audit that they're going to provide us this year, which is a little bit more.
Right.
So we put in their request, so that's in for the next.
Okay.
I was told by Ray today, speaking with him. Know kind of what we ran into.
And you did receive, he did receive the one for the equipment that they just had tested. I thank you for that. And then one last thing, I don't know how we go about this. We all know there's a consolidation talk, there's a operational already in progress. There's talk about what building's staying, what building may not stay. With looking into some of this research for them, I, I just need the guidance to try to move on the next month or two, even with Mr. Pierce. Reliance Firehouse is the only location in that area that's actually residential, big lot. Everything else completely around Chi Avenue, down Mill Road is C1. They decide to sell, I think it's more of a marketing place for the fire departments to, to help them out. How do we start the process to get that going, to ask for that change, to meet that whole block? I'm not doing a spot, spot just for them and everybody else. To, to uniform it into that same position. So once I, if there's a sale, the C1 would help the developers say, hey, it's already C1. They could put the retail stores in to match wherever the other ones, or whatever goes in that area. I told them I may ask, so we could do, start the steps. I did ask for a letter from them, a company letterhead to start the process. Once we get that, then we could start the process to. Everybody else is, the Agnifire Company will never be able to go, because it's like PRD or some close, because of Yorkton. It's residential area, Bruce Wayne's already C1. Because I think that was double-checked when Community Action was residential and they went back over to C1 up the Third Avenue. You did all those changes in 2012, 2014, so. Soon as I get the letter. Right, I mean, I'll talk.
I'm going to interrupt there.
No, that's fine.
If you do look at the zoning map, like it's all C1 except for that little plot where the fire company at. So it kind of, it, it, it does make sense to do, in my opinion also. So, but let's, let's, let's put out the process.
Thank you. That is it.
Any questions for Commissioner Rakowski? Not when we move on to Commissioner Joe here.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, everybody. Mine's very short, the only thing that's in the book so far is the refund list. But the financials and the police report will be available next week. One thing I did want to mention is there's been a new spate of letters or emails to us about Chester Water Authority. And it brought to mind that Senator Kane and Representative Williams are new and were not given our resolution from last year. So I asked the township manager if we could send that to them with the agreement of the board, okay? That's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Mary?
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back. I will wrap up with my report. As our solicitor indicated tonight, we did meet in the executive session. Discuss litigation with some personnel matter, officially make that announcement under my report. We talked about the 3,400 Trichester Avenue land development in Wells Fargo. We will have a resolution for consideration next Thursday night. 46, 464 Chester Highway Land Development, the Duncan Dolets. I believe we're going to be signing an extension letter for them. They did go in front of the zoning board this month, they were given some relief. That, that information is in your packet. Please review it, if you have any questions, we can. And then obviously, we discussed 820 Columbia Avenue, the subdivision for TNT fireworks. They're asking for an extension with that project as well. I really don't have anything else. Tonight, I would like to touch base on what Mr. Needles was speaking about earlier this week, about the county, the health department. I have been speaking with our health officer, Michelle Finelli. And it also touches basically what Commissioner Whitaker brought up earlier tonight and it's the topic of abhorting. I spoke with Ms. Finelli about possible training and taking abhorting classes. I'm not too sure where those classes are at or how much the fees would be for them. The last time I talked to Michelle, she said that she was interested, so I'd like to have another conversation with her. And if so, I'd like to get pricing of what that, of what that training would be and offer it to our health inspector. I think it'd be, I think it's vital to have somebody in our township that, that can handle abhorting situations. It's something I know that I've tried to implement over the years. So that said, if there's no objections, I would just like to go out and get some pricing for the training. And if Michelle's agreeable to it, I will bring that back to attention and hopefully we can move forward on it.
Can I just ask a question? So she would just be identifying abhorting situations, she's not going to handle them, is she? Because that seems to me, based on, one of the kids used to watch those things and it catches your eye. And it, it seems like it's more, there's a much larger psychological component to it than someone who's just had a few classes could, could handle.
Yeah, I think there's, I think it's two different aspects. Just one last thing, just want to touch on Belfry Terrace Subdivision, I believe that's the Larry Jackson project. There has been no submission to the township to date. I think there's a current extension until June 10th. Want to make, I just want to make the board aware that we receive no further updated plans for that subdivision. And if you can get that confirmed with Mrs. Capania for next week, would appreciate it. Are there any questions for me? Questions for me?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan, thank you, everyone, for attending in live and virtually.